Okay, this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been called. And a notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We are coming out of executive session reconvening and the first item we always do is a prayer and a pledge. And Mr. Reverend Fritz Hager will lead us in that.
Please stand. Please join me in prayer in accordance with your tradition as I pray according to mine. Heavenly Father, we come to you, the Author of life and the Grantor of all wisdom. We pray that you would do as you've promised in your word, that you'd grant us wisdom, us being both this board, the leadership of TISD, principals and teachers, staff, as we prepare for the next year, as we do our business here tonight. We're dependent upon your wisdom, we confess that. Father, for this board, as we go to training next week, I pray for safe travels. Pray that it would be a time of learning and of growth and of fun and of fellowship and that you would draw us together in a spirit of unity and peace. Father, for all of us this summer, I pray that this would be a season of rest, that we would recharge and that you would clarify your vision for our lives, the purposes and the plans that you have created for us. And Father, most importantly, that we would rest in the perfect peace that's only possible through faith in your Son, Jesus. I pray this in His name and the power of your Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you for that Reverend Hager. First item after executive session is approval of minutes from the board workshop of May 14th and also May 20th. Do I have any discussion or a motion on approving items A and B?
I move that we approve the minutes of the two board minutes, A and B.
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, Reverend Hager. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye, all opposed say nay. Motion passes, 7-0. We will move on to our continuous improvement portion of our meeting. First, it looks like a T-test walkthrough and evaluation data for the years 2018 and 19.
As part of our annual governance calendar, observation calendar, we do have for this meeting the annual T-test walkthrough evaluation data for 2018-19 since it's the end of the year. Mr. Sanchez should have a very quick report for the board to talk about the appraisals of staff across our different campuses. Mr. Sanchez?
Good evening, Dr. Crawford, Mr. Wade Washman, Board President, Reverend Ruthie Mason, Vice President. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you the data on our T-test for the year. We're really excited this year as we've gone from the flyover, if you will, on walkthroughs and observations to going deep because we understand that as we go deep into watching our teachers and helping our teachers engage kids in learning, we realize and understand that that is the key. Now, there used to be a time that we would walk in for three minutes, give them a little piece of paper, and then walk out. We've gone to a different system now where it's more in-depth, it's more prescriptive, it's a feedback from the teacher to the principal and from the principal to the teacher. And the key to that is that it's a two-way communication. So as Dr. Crawford had mentioned, it's going to be a very quick overview as it is the end of the year. And so, just a reminder of what T-test is, it's a goal-setting professional opportunity for teachers and principals to get to know each other better and to ensure that kids are being successful. These are the four components of the T-test as they are there in front of you. There's the planning, there's the instruction, the learning environment, and the professional practices, and responsibilities. Okay, this is the elementary information. We have, at the time, we had 573 elementary teachers that we did walkthroughs with and there was 2,175 walkthroughs. So what a joy it is to have principals in our schools that could walk into the classrooms over 2,000 times. That's remarkable because we know that as principals and assistant principals are in classrooms, kids are getting better. And as a result of that, teachers are growing. And so that was an average of 3.8. 100% of our teachers, thankfully, were evaluated in accordance with the T-test method, but more than that, it's not about a compliance, but it's a commitment. We have a commitment to teachers and students to ensure that we're make, that kids are being engaged. You have the secondary, 615. Think I'm off a slide here. Here we go. 615 and its secondary, 2,136 opportunities that our principals and assistant principals had to watch great teaching happening. Great teaching happening is when kids are engaged. And so that was an average of 3.5. And again, happy to report that 100% of our secondary teachers met the requirements or our principals met the requirements for all of our teachers to be evaluated. Again, it's not about a commitment, I mean, it's not about a compliance, but it's about a commitment, commitment to get, to getting better. So in total, over 4,000 walkthroughs were conducted this year. So really excited about that because you can be rest assured as a board that our principals and our assistant principals were in classrooms a minimum of 4,000 times in an in-depth conversation, feedback, back and forth between teacher and principal and principal and teacher. Any questions?
Yes, I have one question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
How quickly do the teachers receive feedback from the walkthroughs?
They're usually done within a 24 to 48-hour time period.
All right.
I had a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we've been using T-test, I have noticed that when we go to the schools and we walk into the classroom, the kids are just ho-hum, there's another person in the room. It doesn't disrupt the classroom. Like years past, whenever somebody different would walk in the classroom, the whole, the whole class would turn and just be distracted. But with as many walkthroughs as are going on right now, it's just no big deal for somebody else to come in and so we can tell that that's happening, so.
We appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Sanchez, other districts that have done merit pay programs have used their teacher evaluation system as one of several components. Based off your experience with T-test and the district's use of it, do you feel this is a good measure of the quality instruction that teachers deliver and would be something that could, if the district decided to go forward with that, be included in a plan like that?
As long as it's one part of it. I think that, you know, it's more than just on a day, on a sunny afternoon, on a Tuesday that have, that we make that determination. It has to be a multitude of things that I think we need to look at, but I think this is one part of it that would be helpful for teachers to understand what they need to do. And not only that, but the thing I really like about T-test is that it's a feedback for doing teacher and principal, and principal and teacher, and it's back and forth. It's not a, this is what I saw and whether or not you think you saw it, this is what it is. It's an opportunity for them to have dialogue back and forth about what they thought they were going to see, what they really saw, and then where do they help each other grow? Because principals need to grow as a result of T-test as well. Okay, and so as we do walkthroughs together, okay, then they have to, there's a collaboration that goes along with it, and then they also have to make sure that everybody's evaluating at the same level. I think that's where sometimes we have a disconnect, is that maybe the assistant principal and the principal might look at the evaluation differently, okay, but when there's an alignment there, then I think that's when the teacher is better, and if the teacher is better, then as a result, the kid becomes better.
Yep, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Sanchez?
That's all I have for right now, for this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, next we have the state assessment of academic progress and of course, college and career and military readiness results, CCMR.
Yes, this is the, again, part of the monitoring calendar that we've approved, or the board's approved for the administration to present. We have Dr. James Kuratin, Director of Assessment for the district. We also, accountability assessment, excuse me, we have Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Assistant for Curriculum Instruction. Mr. Sanchez, Assistant Assistant Schools will also be there as well. We're presenting to the board the end-of-course results that we have received and have been stamped and provided to the district and the public. College, Career, Military Readiness, CCMR results, are those stamped yet and official? They're...
Yeah, they're close.
They're close.
Projected.
So I understand we have to wait for TEA, it doesn't always line up perfectly with our board meetings. So we're trying to give you the best information that we have at this point before TEA releases that, and so we're going to go over that today. We're going to talk about Algebra I at both the high school campuses and the middle schools that are proctoring Algebra I, English I, English II, Biology, Algebra, no, excuse me, and US History. Did I get all five? I did? Okay. So there you go, English I, English II, Algebra, Biology, and US History. We'll present that to y'all and y'all can ask questions throughout or when we're finished. Gus, y'alls?
Well, thank you, Dr. Crawford and the board, for giving us this chance to present this data to you. Before we really dig into the data, I just want to give you a quick refresher on this accountability system because there is a lot to it. And what we're presenting tonight will account for the majority of the district's rating and the high school's rating. So there's three domains in this new system. One, that's student achievement, it's just strictly performance for the majority of our campuses. Domain 2A is growth, and then domain 2B is relative performance, and domain 3 is closing the gaps. So in domain 1, which is the performance domain, what we're presenting tonight accounts for 40%, 40% of that is the EOC scores, it's going to count for 40% of the total score on our high schools. Our CCMR data is going to account for 40%, another 40% of domain 1 on our high schools. The district will be calculated similarly. So these two components tonight will account for 80% of our domain 1 ratings. For domain 2A, which is growth, that's purely based on EOC scores for the high school and the district. For relative performance, domain 2B, that's half EOC scores and half CCMR. And then for closing the gaps, our third domain, 50% of that is based on EOC scores and 30% of that is based on CCMR. The other 20% comes from tail pass growth and then graduation rates. So what we're presenting tonight accounts for a lot of our high school and district accountability rating. Just to remind you about EOC performance, there's four levels of proficiency, ranking from not met all the way up to masters with approaches and meets in between. Students that get approaches are likely to succeed with targeted academic intervention according to TEA, and then students that gets meets are considered meets on grade, meets grade level. They may need short-term targeted academic intervention to continue to be successful, whereas our master's students need little to no academic intervention. And all three of these are important in the overall accountability rating of campuses.
Let's pause just for a second, Mr. Kuratin. Board, I want to remind y'all, we've said this before, that approaches, the meets, and the masters is as it is compared to the state's definition of college-ready. So I think you can get a little bit probably misled on these labels in regard to whether or not it's just approaches, meets, or mastery of where they're at now. But it is towards would they likely be succeeding in college based upon these levels? That is actually from the Commissioner of Education and TEA does validate that methodology as this compares to college readiness, not just whether or not they're going to graduate or not.
Go ahead.
So on the next slide, you will have the, our English I and English II scores. As you can see, we had growth in English I, relatively even or even in English II. Then at the bottom, you will see, sorry, four, all four of our high schools increased from last year to this year on approaches. Three out of four of them, meets and masters increased. So really excited about where we are with our English I at this point. As we continue to look at where our most difficult and challenging areas are, they're right here, English I and English II. And so as Dr. Crawford continues to lay out his vision for kids to be able to read at the third grade level, it has a direct impact on these English I and English II scores.
Read at the third grade level by third grade.
Read at the third grade level by the third grade. There you go. We've just said it so many times, I just feel like we all know what it means now.
I know.
But for those of y'all that are new to our board meeting, one of our goals is 85% of our students at the third grade level will be reading at the third grade level at the third grade.
There you go.
Okay, and so we know that as we continue to seek our, and make sure that our vision for the district is such that it will help improve our English I and English II scores. Okay, I would like, before we go any further, we do have our high school principals or representatives in the audience, so I want to acknowledge them. If you are here, and we know you are, please stand. Or you're representative. And as you remain standing, as we look at our algebra scores, how exciting is that, y'all? And our biology scores, how exciting is that? US history, again, how exciting is that? So I just want to make sure that we recognize our principals who are the leaders of the campuses because at times, when things aren't going well, okay, then we look for the leader. We also want to look for the leader when things are going good. So I want to make sure that we acknowledge the principals tonight and the hard work that they're doing at our high schools because being a high school principal is not easy. It is hard work. So again, high school principals, thank you very much. You can sit down now. Okay?
One question for clarification, approaches is passing, right? Even so, that's a label that sounds like it's, you didn't meet the standard the way the state has labeled it, but in terms of how it's calculated, that's actually credited to us and to the students as passing?
It's meet standards.
Okay.
So the summary, you can see is, that sort of gives you the summary of John Tyler, Robert E. Lee, RISE, and early college high school there as compared to last year. So very proud of the high schools for that, and, thank you. And then this is just a quick visual of the, by content. Arrow up means that there was an increase in the scores from last year. A dash means that it stayed the same. Arrow down means we had a little drop. So now let's look at CCMR. This first page really tells you what the indicators are, and you can read down that list. So for a student to be considered college, career, military-ready, they had to meet one of those criteria. And, do you want to go through this one, James?
So what we gave you here is just a comparison of 2017-18, our CCMR breakdown for 2017-18, which was our 16-17 graduates.
[inaudible].
Right. And 2018-19, this year's data, which is based on last year's graduates, so 2017-18 graduates. And really, the key here that I wanted to point out was you can see that, we didn't, I didn't list every single CCMR criteria. I listed the ones where we have had credit in the past, and you can see that the majority of the increase in our seniors for 17-18 came from CTE courses that were aligned to TA's industry certifications or actual industry certifications, and we had an actual bump in the enlistment in armed forces as well. So just in the last, well, two of the last three years, we had seen, we've seen a pretty significant jump in our CTC, our CTE components and how they correspond to CCMR. On the right-hand side, that little table just shows you what our CCMR scores were for the high schools last year, and then this year what they're projected to be based on the data we have right now. You can see that at the district level for JT and for Lee, we're actually seeing pretty significant jumps. At John Tyler, we're seeing a jump of almost 20 points, and then at Lee in the district level, we're seeing a jump of about 15, 16 points, projected. For RISE, we actually see a score of about 20. We can't compare it to last year, but that's a pretty good number for our AEA campus, which is RISE. We don't have any data for early college high school because 2018-19 is our first senior class. So next year, we'll have a comparison for them.
That's 80, how many graduates do we have, 82?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four graduates that'll be added. And remember, those are not, those numbers are not just like 131 kids only got the CTE course. Those are just the numbers that we get into this big formula methodology that we have to plug all of our numbers into, that TEA spits out at us. So that's, it's not a straight number of numbers.
Right. And it's also not percentage, right?
Correct.
The number, well, the scores on the right-hand side, those would be a college, they're basically the percent of seniors that graduated and had met one of those criteria. The numbers on the right-hand side would just be the percent that are CCMR.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Like I showed you on that first slide, the CCMR and the EOC scores, they combine for various pieces of the accountability system. And so when we combine them to really get an overall picture of the campuses in terms of academic performance and college, career, military readiness, that table again shows you how each campus scored last year compared to this year. And you can see that every single campus, high school campus, is projected to go up at least one point. And you can see RISE in particular is projected to make about a 30-point jump, which is, which is great news. So our EOC performance, just to kind of rehash it, was higher for three of our four campuses. Our CCMR, when combined with EOCs, was higher for every campus. And so when we get the accountability ratings, this should reflect that those higher EOC and CCMR scores. And that's it, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
You often hear people talk about the percentage of college freshmen that require remediation. Do we ever get that data reported back to us in a district-specific way, or is that just kept only at the college level?
So if the student took the TSI test with us, and that, that's an indication of whether the student's going to take a college-level reading class or English 101 usually, or whether the student's going to take a remedial course first. The same in math. So if they take the course with us, I mean, they take the test through us or through TJC, one of the local universities, then we can track, we can track that. If they go to somewhere else, then we may not, we may not know that information, but if it's through the TSI test, then we can have that information. But if it's another measure that another, that other universities use to determine whether it's remedial or not, then that's not something that we can't, especially if they go out of state. If they're out of state, then all, sort of all bets are off related to being able to track the information.
Okay, so to make sure I understand this, if they take the TISD, through TISD, they take the TSI for dual credit purposes, whatever, as a sophomore, junior, maybe even senior, if they then go to college and require remediation, we would know that?
We, well, we would, may, perhaps. So if, sometimes if they take the TSI and they don't do well, we remediate.
Right.
Before they ever get to that point, and we make sure they're ready. So in answer to your question is, we can track the TSI data, but what necessarily happens directly after that or what the kids do, if it's self, a lot of them self-report and then we can track it. But there's no sort of this internal higher ed system that then brings it back to us, no sir.
Okay, thank you.
But higher ed does track it.
Yes.
They do.
Yes.
And they point a finger back at us, so.
So they're supposed to start sharing that data back to the LEAs, the local education agencies, and we'll also begin receiving out-of-state data. That used to be the hardest thing to track was, if a kid went to Alabama, you didn't know whether or not they were doing well or not. And they're also supposed to start tracking in-state private schools as well. So if you went to Baylor or Incarnate Word or TCU, you, we will have access to that information as well. But that's not ready yet. That's something that TEA and the Higher Ed Coordinating Board is working on.
Okay, anything else? Well, I'll say this much, it's good to see gains wherever we can get them, and I know we're never satisfied, but when I see this data and I see gains, it makes me proud of the staff and the teachers, one, and this board over the last six years, seeing the steady gains we've had. Dr. Crawford, due to a lot of policies you've come up with, and that just takes buy-in, and you can tell from the data that staff has bought in, and those decisions aren't always easy decisions, I'm sure, for you as a superintendent, but it seems like the kids are benefiting from it and the district is.
Well, two, two things on this, Mr. Washman. One is on the EOC, especially at JT, very proud of the, of the work they put in this year. I mean, we're, we're not going to sit here and tell you what the letter grade's going to be because projecting that right now is a, have a better chance of doing some other things, but when those get closer to being finalized, we can release it. But we feel good about JT right now. They did a good job last year. Their two deans of instruction are sitting on the front row over there. Ms. Vezey's out on, on leave right now for some personal stuff, on medical leave, I think, personal leave. And so in saying that, kudos to them and their staff for that. The second thing I'll say is, is that we could not do what we're doing on our CCMR without the support of our community. We've got a great facility in the Career and Technology Center, and a lot of the, of this data is produced out of that. So extremely excited that this board and previous boards, previous administrations, the community, the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Council supported that initiative back in 2013 because we're seeing the fruits of that, of that labor and that work. So that, you know, appreciate the accolades for district administration and leadership and staff, but that CCMR number is directly tied to our community. And that's some shared accountability there as well. It's not just on the school system to do it, it's actually within our Chambers of Commerce and other groups that support us as well. So, so thank you.
Dr. Crawford, what percentage of your early college high school students are John Tyler and what percentage are Lee?
Seventy, thirty, sixty, forty, which one is it?
I think it's, we're probably closer to seventy, thirty.
Yeah.
Which one? John Tyler, seventy percent?
Seventy, thirty, John Tyler, Lee, thirty.
Those are some good scores, that's great.
Yeah.
Wonderful scores.
We often see scores that seem to move just a little bit, and we wonder how we'll ever hit our goals. This is an example of one where there's big improvement, significant improvement that gets us to where we need to be much faster. So, good job.
Okay, well, thank you for the report. Okay, next we have 30 minutes, probably not, but our public participation section of our meeting. And just, just to remind everybody, the board can ask clarifying questions, but we can't respond to any comments. And so tonight, we have four individuals signed up to speak, and each will generally have about five minutes. The first is Andre Williams.
Good evening, members of the board, President Washman, Vice President Mason, and Dr. Crawford. My name is Andre Williams, and I'm a proud product of Tyler ISD, attending Griffin, Dogan, and John Tyler. Many generations of my family are also TISD alumni, as well as current and retired employees. Currently, I am a middle school teacher for Tyler ISD and the president for Tyler Education Association affiliated with Texas State Teachers Association and the National Education Association. Our locals traveled to Austin to rally for an improvement in school finance during spring break, and we have been anxiously watching the legislators as they work out a plan. We are truly appreciative to the state for finally passing a substantial finance package. I'm here today requesting from this school board that we, the professional staff, be given a 10% across-the-board increase, as well as the support staff receive a 5% increase across the board. We also request that the money not be presented as a stipend, but as a true increase to the base salaries. Stipends are not salary increases and should only be set aside for extra duty pay. There's a possibility of overpayment or underpayment or other errors as staff positions or underpayment or other errors as staff positions change when pay is given as a stipend. Our Texas legislators have made the appropriations and mandated that these funds be given to teachers, librarians, counselors, and others. We're asking that our requests be considered to the fullest extent. Thank you for your time and attention to our requests.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Okay, next we have Christina Folsom.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time. My name is Christina Folsom. I am the founder and CEO of the East Texas Human Needs Network. Prior to that, I was the executive director for PATH. But prior to that, what many people don't know is that I was the director of programs for the Monticello Area Community Action Agency in Virginia, and that our organization was the grantee for Head Start for five full counties. So I'm here today to talk to you about Head Start. Locally, I've been very fortunate to work with the Title I program and with Head Start in many capacities. As a member of the Tyler Area Partnership for Education, this is a collective impact effort to improve education outcomes. Head Start is actively engaged in the East Texas Human Needs Network through the Education Council, with key staff speaking at our annual summit. We've provided training to Head Start staff, including poverty simulations and Bridges Out of Poverty, and we just graduated our very first Getting Ahead class that was made up of parents in the Head Start program. I'm really happy to learn about the full-day pre-K program. I'm very happy. I've been thinking about that for years. So many of us have been striving for that for such a long time. But I'm really concerned about the closing of the Head Start program, and I pray that that decision has not already been made. Full-day pre-K for eligible children, combined with Head Start programming, ensures that each student's very unique needs are addressed. Our Head Start program receives $3.2 million in federal funds. There is a school match. However, that match is made up primarily of services that the school would continue to pay in the absence of the Head Start program. If the grant, if the program goes away and that grant is given back, it will be reallocated to other communities. And next year or in the future, when we decide that we need our Head Start program back, whether under a school district or under another organization, it will take years to get a comparable amount back in this community. Head Start provides 432 of our most vulnerable three- and four-year-olds with wraparound services that include family case management, parenting, health, and nutrition. This is not available through pre-K. Head Start students have better outcomes than other students in the same socioeconomic environment, and this dual-generation approach, working with parents and children at the same time, really improves the future of the families in our entire community. TISD has worked with Head Start for more than fifty years. As a result, this Head Start program is exemplary. It's one of the best. Other communities have embedded Head Start and pre-K, and our community should not be the exception. I pray that the board retain Head Start, that we enroll all eligible children, and then determine which program is best for each child, whether it is Head Start or pre-K. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Folsom. Okay, next we have Brenda Devon.
Good evening, and again, thank you for your time.
Good evening.
I know nothing about the numbers and the programs as they go as far as grants or programs, but I do know about the parentage. At this particular point in my life, I never thought I'd be standing up in front of a Head Start group asking for anything in particular. But the Head Start program has served my community very well. Our students, as they come in from different variations of life, they've been able to come in, catch up, and keep up. And that's why I'm standing here. I would love for the program, the, the pre-K program to go into full date, but the three- and four-year-olds that are falling behind, that are lagging behind, need that Head Start program. I work for a daycare. I get to see a lot of these kids. They have no idea as far as schooling is concerned, as far as language is concerned. They fall behind quickly, and Head Start has filled in that hole. As far as, I was listening when they were talking about this, the, the new program, the test program. A lot of our kids, our three- and four-year-olds, when they get to that point, I would love to see where they were when, how they got started to get there. And I would be willing to bet that at least thirty to forty percent of these came through Head Start. Head Start is exactly what it says, giving these kids a Head Start. And we really need to continue that program until something else is in place. And pre-K starts at five years old, I'm guessing. So that puts that little group behind before they can get started. And as far as I'm concerned, as a parent, as an instructor, I won't say a teacher, because like I say, I'm in, I'm in daycare. As an instructor, we need something to gauge the gaps before they get there. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Devon. Okay, and our final speaker tonight, looks like it's April Gost. I might have read that wrong. I apologize.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you to the board for giving me the time. And I would also like to say thank you to any of the teachers that may be in our audience for your dedication, your service, and your patience with our students every day. Again, my name is April Gost, and I'm here to also speak about Head Start. I really don't have a bone in the fight because my child is fifteen right now, but I'm here because of other students, and also have a great niece who just recently applied and was accepted. So I'm hoping that we can continue with this. I want to speak about the four primary reasons and focuses of why we started Head Start in the first place: education, health, economics, and law enforcement. We have to remember our first five. That was really one of the statements and goals that they used in creating Head Start. First five is crucial years. We know that our kids are learning in things at that time, vocabulary, reading, math, and they can often get very behind with that. So we want to make sure that education and those thought processes are kept in place. Health-wise, we know that we start those kids early in school, immunizations will get done, mortality rates decrease thirty to fifty percent on those kids who started in, in pre-K, I mean, sorry, in Head Start early. So we want to keep those focuses in mind and those agendas in mind. It's really the biggest thing that I'm concerned about, economics. We know that it's low-income students that generally are accepted in these programs. We can help decrease Medicaid with the cost by those early education, nutritional education is given to our parents, who are also involved with those students who are in Head Start as well. And of course, law enforcement, we know that once we get these students in and learning that long-term, we want to help decrease any of those effects we can have for victims, victims of crime and family and just themselves committing those crimes. So those are the things that I'm not sure what the pre-K program is. And it may be wonderful, and I hope that it is, but I want to hope that we can focus on making sure that those four primary focuses are kept in mind when we're considering what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gost. Okay, appreciate everybody coming out to speak. We're going to move on to the next portion, Business Legal Finance Consent Agenda. Do we have any items, Marty, that we want to pull?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
B, F, I, and J. And I and J can be together. We'll have Mr. Loper come up and kind of talk the board through those processes. And we do have a, under separate cover, adjusted agenda item for I.
For I?
You should have that at your, at your place.
Okay.
So B, F, I, and J, the administration request, that we pull those to talk about.
Okay. Well, then, that being the case, I'll take a motion to approve everything aside from B, F, I, and J.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Real quick, Mr. Washman, D, just want to say thank you to the Tyler Economic Development Council, along with the City of Tyler, for participating in that demographic study with the school system. They will actually contribute funds for that along with us as we get our data back. As far, I know there's been some questions in the community the last couple, three months about what certain developments may do or not do to the, our enrollments in our populations. But they are participating in that. Look forward to working with them on that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Tyler is a growing town. Okay, so we have B, Consider Approval of Gifts and Donations.
Yep. Sound like a broken record, but it's good stuff to repeat. It's always great to repeat. But on, on page twenty of your packet, you do have your gifts and donations for the month. And we love to celebrate these philanthropic citizens that support our students across the school system. Doctors Carrie and Karen Clark, who just graduated a student this last May, then will graduate another one next year, and they've got another one in the system. Very appreciative of their support of, of our school system. They're contributing a $5,000 amount to the Tyler ISD Career Technology Center, I believe, to the Health Services portion of that to be used there. We're excited about that. $7,325, the Robert E. Lee Kickers Club, to Robert E. Lee High School Soccer. And then for $20,685.60, the Robert E. Lee Booster Club, for various school clubs to that actual campus. So over $30,000 in donations that were provided by local citizens and community supporters to our schools. We're very appreciative of that.
Okay, yeah. And as far as broken records go, I could listen to that song all night. Okay, anybody want to make a motion to approve the gifts and donations?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the gifts and donations as listed on page twenty.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Dr. Nation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to move on to item F, Consider Approval of the Delegate or the Alternate for the Tasca-Tasby Convention.
Yeah, on page twenty-seven of your packet, this board may, I'm not going to shall, may elect a delegate and an alternate to attend the Tasby Delegate Asse, or the Tasby, Tasca-Tasby Convention, September twentieth through twenty-second, and actually participate in the Delegate Assembly amongst the 1,000-plus school systems across the state. I believe we've had Reverend Hager do that before. Mr. Martinez, I believe you've done it before. I'm hearing that there's a certain vice president that may like to see that happen. I don't know who the alternate would like to be on that. I will remind her that John Tyler does play at home that weekend. So that is an action item. If that's something y'all would like to do, we will certainly figure out our way to get them to Dallas.
Well, I hope that doesn't change your desire to serve. I've done this every year since I've been on the board, and I've requested at the last time I was appointed that that be the last time. So I think in favor of it being anybody but me. But Reverend Mason, if you're still interested, and I know, Mr. Martinez, you were planning on attending because of Leadership Tasby, you'd make a fine alternate if you're still willing to go. Or unless you want to switch, you can go to the football game and serve as the alternate. Be open to either of those.
I would gladly serve.
Okay. Aaron's, alternate's fine. Looks like we got a couple winners there. Well, thank you for doing that. So I guess, do I have a motion to approve Mr. Arinthia Mason?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Martinez isn't all.
Yes. Okay, looks like we got it figured out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Reverend Mason.
You just very well.
For doing that. Okay. Moving on to item I, Consider Approval of Purchase of Interactive Flat Screens for John Tyler High School and Robert E. Lee High School.
Yeah, Mr. Loper's going to make his way to the podium here. Some good news tonight on I and J. Both.
I and J.
Within budget. He'll go over that here in a minute. But this is the, actually the, some of the technology portion of our bond construction program that we have at John Tyler and Lee, along with the furniture and equipment, better known as FF and E, Future Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, part of the bond program. They get some good news for us tonight. Mr. Loper?
Thank you. Just, and Board of Trustees, thank you for your time. Just to clarify the amended agenda that you have, as we were doing our competitive seal proposal, we went with a bulk amount, so that all the vendors that actually turned in their proposals on this, they were all apples and apples. So we just had a round number of what we thought exactly would be the amount at each campus. So they did that. And then, as we clarified as early as last Friday, to be able to get contracts together on who we were recommending, we confirmed the amount. So the good news is, it went down by $21,000. So that's the clarification on the agenda item tonight.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea of the process we've been going through, this has been going on since September of 2017. We actually formed a committee. We retained True North, who's our technology consultant that actually designed both campuses. And we held a technology or formed a technology committee from both high schools, designated teachers, media specialists, administrators, and our own technology department to determine what would be the best technology that we can, if we could afford it, what, what is it that we could do in the classroom setting? And overwhelmingly, as I showed in the background, they all picked from smartboards to interactive projectors, to interactive flat screens, and overwhelmingly picked interactive flat screens. So that's where that got us today. As True North, when we put the RF, the, sorry, the CSP Competitive Seal Proposal out, they had a waiting criteria. Of course, we had our technology department involved, Brady, Beddingfield, and Ms. Cherie Jones involved. We also had, we needed a teacher's perspective, which we did get a lot of that from Mrs. Jones, too, because she's had experience in the classroom. But we got Candace James from Ms. Shawna Hiddle's department to look at how that curriculum would be delivered. I think her actual title is Digital Innovative Specialist. I think there used to be Instructional Technology, but anyway. Nevertheless, we had a good team. Obviously, we wanted to know part of their scoring, obviously, the, the big score was price, all right? But nevertheless, we were, True North was able to pare that down to four finalists, and then we did what we called a shootout. They got to bring their flat-screen TVs, and they lined them up in a room about as big as A, which was the maintenance facility conference room. And they had thirty minutes to sell their goods, tell us how they were going to, how we were going to deliver instruction, everything they could get in thirty minutes about that flat screen. And then we had an opportunity, fifteen minutes, to answer questions. They were held to that forty-five minutes, kicked them out, brought the next ones in while the others are waiting in the hall. It was really quite an experience. And I learned a lot and enjoyed it. But we got a lot of good input. Everyone got to score, and it came down to a recommendation to go in with synergy, technology in the mount, as you see on this amended agenda. So, I mean, we asked tough questions, too. You may, as a board, say, well, wait a minute, aren't these things made in China? Well, yeah, they are. And we would ask questions like, well, if I, if the board approves this, and I cut a check the next day, can you guarantee that there won't be any tariffs or geopolitical or anything? We've already experienced some of that in the past. Some had some great answers, some didn't. A lot of them have them in the United States stocked. And actually, one of the vendor, the vendor that we're recommending has them in stock, and they can deliver. So... So lots of good, look, good questions in that. You want me to move on furniture?
I need to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, ask a question.
I'm very excited about these. We've used them at the college level. My concern is, will there be training provided for all of our classroom instructors so that they'll be proficient in the use of this, because these are great tools for the classroom?
That's a great question, and that is a question the committee asked. And we asked them to take us through that training and what that looks like. The good thing about this, this company is they're local.
Is what?
They're local.
Yes, they are.
And they have ensured us that they will have training, they'll have retraining, they'll do whatever it takes to get their product. Now, they are not installers. They probably install, but that's not how this industry works. Because I'm like, why can't we just buy them straight from the factory? But it's not allowed. They're called like resellers. So they're delivered to us. We already, True North, our designer, already had the contractor that's on site now to be the installer. So yes, ma'am, training will be, will take place continuously and ahead of time.
The exciting thing about these interactive flat screens are, if you'll think about, I mean, technology can be called a chalkboard, anything that enhances our learning tech or instructional technology. But if you think about going back to the early 80s, the most consistent thing we've had as far as a learning tool, as far as technology goes, is a TV, if you think about it. There's been a lot of other fads that have come and gone. Some of those things this district has adopted that's not being used probably quite as much consistently across the school system. You talk about those flat, the, what are those called? Promethean boards?
Yeah, smart boards or Promethean boards.
The good thing about these are, these TVs not only will be allowed to talk to devices, that you can actually throw your, throw your, whatever you're working on, a tablet or your own phone, up onto that screen within our acceptable use policy. It'll also be to where you can actually go up to the screen, touch it, and do some pretty cool things as well, move some things around. But it'll also be connected to the, to both high schools and for their morning announcements. And anytime something comes on, if there's a security situation, we'll be able to actually flash something up there on that screen using this. You could not do that with some of those smart boards that you had, because they were always connected to one of those things that's up there that we couldn't leave on all the time. A TV can actually be left on the entire time. I do believe that every classroom is, is being provided, is that, well, how did you?
Every classroom.
Every classroom is going to be provided one of these, along with some of the collaborative breakout areas, so.
Correct.
We got a really good deal on this, but instructionally speaking, it's a very diverse and adaptable tool that we're going to have inside of our classrooms for communication and emergency situations and learning as well. And that was really what we went into on this, so.
I don't, I didn't see a width or a height. What is the size of the board?
They're 75-inch, which is 75 diagonally. They're, they're large, and we even tested those out. We have some that are mounted over in the, currently in the administration building. They're not exactly the brand we have. They're all similar and have similar apps on them, but very good visuals all the way to the back classroom.
Oh, it's an excellent tool.
I'm excited.
I'm sorry, Mr. Loper, the language you use here is best value to the district. You mentioned cost as one of the main criteria in the selection. Could you comment on whether or not this vendor was indeed the lowest cost? And if so, if not, what the gap is between this bidder and the next?
So there's other scoring criteria also. They, we, you know, they scored points on certainly their delivery of goods, their deployment that they've had, what size deployments that they've had, and who for, how many other school districts they work in. Were they the lowest? No, sir. They were not. And the, the other things that we looked at is their warranties was really big as far as I was concerned in hardware, and I know Joseph was also concerned about that. We offered in our CSP a five-year warranty. There's two firms that offered a seven-year warranty at no extra cost. So that played a big part in it. So we've got seven years on these boards. We looked at basically their goods and services and how they performed with, in the past with other, we've looked at relationships currently with the school district. So all of these criteria, it was very, very close, and it was very competitive process. But synergy, synergy squeaked out, squeaked by.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Do you recall rough, I mean, are we talking about $10,000 here? Are we talking about $100,000 cost difference?
I don't recall exactly what that cost was. You know, we asked for unit costs, and they would be from $2,530 to $2,450. And it was, it was very, very close.
Do you know how many total units we're getting out of this?
I think there's 100 and, Brady, 110? Oh, 140 each campus. No, no, I'm sorry, split between both camps.
Okay.
Okay.
What's the earliest date you think these would be put into use?
Well, at John Tyler, that's another thing. We've got so many different phases. At John Tyler, we're going to have to have these installed probably in October for instructional classroom, and open in December.
So we're not too far ahead of it to where the technology's going to change, you think, considerably before?
No, sir. And, and I understand your question. It changes fast. I'm still stuck on overhead projectors, and I found some.
And you're right, some of the stuff we tried out sounded neat, and I've sat through a lot of these meetings when we've approved technology, and some of it worked better than others. So.
Well, if you think about it, in 2004 bond, we went from overhead projectors and pull-down screens, then we went back and retrofitted with smart boards, and then at middle schools, we went to smart projectors and.
Yeah.
But pretty neat machines that we're putting in.
So every classroom will have one of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Every instructional classroom?
Yes, ma'am.
And some of the, what would you call it?
Collaboration areas?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And the libraries?
I think the libraries, we had a roll-in model for them. It's actually not mounted. It's on a portable model. We did put that in some of our specs. So it could be flexible and versatile.
Do they have built-in LaserDisc players?
I'm sure you can get any kind of bell or whistle you want on.
Stream that. Okay.
You can probably just, you can send your Pandora app to it.
Yeah, I imagine they're pretty cool.
Let's don't give any suggestions.
And then we also, we're combining these two, so there's some furniture and equipment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Another big milestone for us is getting the fixtures, furniture, and equipment for both high schools. And again, we selected a, a committee to help us with this. We retained Corrigan Associates to help us put the bid documents together. They've got experience in this. If you'll recall, we retained them to do the middle schools, put those bid documents together, and also Career and Technology Center way back when we did that. We had some members, Dr. Crawford actually sat in on some of those meetings, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Jones, Dr. Hanson. We had Robert E. Lee representatives, Dan Crawford, I saw him here tonight, and Dr. Walls. We had Ms. Vizi, and I think I saw Ms. Skiller over there. She's actually on our committee too, and of course, the facilities team. We also met individually with, as we were putting all of this together with your departments such as Fine Arts, Athletics, Special Ed, Nursing, and even in Gary Brown with our Career and Technology. So we wanted to make sure that we got the right product. I know the big concern of the committee was we need our classrooms flexible. So we need to be able to move our furniture around. We need to be able to put it in collaboration in pods and, and all of those things to make it as flexible. So we challenged, and we went over a lot of furniture with Corrigan. We challenged them. They put the package together. And we went out and we got 16 respondents, I believe, on that. No, 13, I'm sorry. Then we went through the process of looking at the proposal to see who met specification, who didn't meet specification, who met program, who didn't meet program, because we did allow them to give alternates to it, just to be fair and see if there's something out there that we missed that might be a better mousetrap. Out of the 13 that submitted, we, we had Corrigan shortlisted four, and then they had to come in and do an interview with Corrigan at that point. We talked with Corrigan about those interviews and made suggestions on things that we'd like to know, one of them being warranty again. The other is we're concerned about installation. Okay, you got these phases. We need to know what your installation crew looks like, what your manpower looks like, and can you deliver? And then something really simple we've also asked is, you need, they need to tell us how they're going to handle their trash, and believe me, buying furniture for all the schools that we've done in the past, that's a huge burden. And so they have to have a plan of how they get rid of all of the cardboard and all of the banding material, everything that comes with that as they stage and put the stuff together. So that was a big thing for us too. Again, purchase price was one of the major factors in that. To what extent their goods or services meet the district needs, the impact of their compliance with the program and what we're trying to achieve in the school. Long-term cost to the district was also considered, and any other really relevant factor that was listed in the RFP. We shortlisted down the Abel's Land Business Interiors and GL Seamen, which is a Knoll product, is the manufacturer, and McKinney Office Supply. So with those shortlisted bidders, we then came to the recommendation that you have in your board packet tonight, which was Abel's Land. And Abel's is a local company here. Abel's basically got the classroom furniture in both projects. So that's all your student desks, student tables, teacher's desk, teacher's chair. And then everything else for like the bulk of it went to Business Interiors, which would be lots of different tables, cafeteria tables, teacher core area, work areas, some collaboration at John Tyler. We have Knoll is basically all collaboration at Robert E. Lee. And you may ask, why, why is there a difference? It's basically the design of the building, because a lot of the Knoll furniture that was specified works better out in the middle of the, basically, the aisleways as opposed to all your collaboration areas at John Tyler are kind of in nooks off of the corridors. So it's just a different in design. We did go over every bit of this again, one more time, just to make sure we're right with our campus leaders and.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Loper?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you look at the quality of the furniture?
Yes.
We're dealing with high school students, and we want to be concerned about sustainability over a period of time?
That's part of our grading criteria.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. And it was a big concern of the committee and myself.
We've learned, I'm sorry, Tim.
Go ahead.
We've learned a lot since the 13 bond.
Right.
I mean, just to the point now to where the student desk not having these little spokes on the end that have these little removable plastic caps that they can shove trash down and then put the cap back on. Now they make the tables where they actually have the table on top of the cap. Can't get to that cap or that little leg. So we were pretty specific on that. I mean, teenagers are creative. They're going to figure out a way to get around some of the design. But in saying that, with CTC and with our middle schools, we kind of figured that out. I will say this, I think our CTC furniture has held up better because our high school kids are a little bit better as far as not wanting to be so interested on how a table is built. Like the middle school kids are.
Take it apart and see.
Yeah, and what'll, what'll fit in this, and what'll fit in there. So in saying that, yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yeah, I actually set in some of those and tested some of those out to see how durable they were.
Thank you.
And one of my other concerns too is, you know, we have to move that furniture out of the classroom every summer to clean those rooms. So we, we want to be able to, you know, make it as easy as possible on our custodians because they're responsible for doing that and being able to, to roll the, as much as we can out instead of picking up and stacking and all that.
And he has, they have to listen to me or whomever in regard to the condition of our floors. So how we were able to move those effectively without scratching up the floors is a big deal. We try to make those things shine, so.
You mentioned these would be the television, well, what do you call them? Will be installed in October. Is this at the end of the school day? Are we interrupting teachers' classrooms, or how are we?
No, this is in the new, this will be in the new unoccupied area at John Tyler.
All right, all right.
And we'll install as we finish our phases before we move teachers in, in, in any of the remodel areas.
Mr. Loper, same question. This item is the last one. Best value was the selection here. Can you comment on the gap amongst those that made, that met all the criteria? What was the price gap between that and some of the other vendors?
I have that here, actually. Abel's Land did a great job and were very competitive. They actually, I would say, the reason that they got the classroom furniture, in some cases, they were $203,000 difference. In another case, at one of the schools, $148,000 difference, which really put them over the top. And then they interviewed well as far as being able to install and meet our needs and our schedule.
Okay, so what I heard you say was Abel's Land was within the category they bid, also the lowest bidder as well as the best value?
They bid all of the furniture, but the furniture, just the classroom furniture, they beat everyone else. And then Business Interiors, as all the other furniture I mentioned, the rest of the furniture, they beat everybody else, so.
On price?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're also, not only best value, but lowest price?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Loper, could you go back again? The Knoll Incorporated, that's at Robert E. Lee, what is the difference there?
It's, okay, well, the total design of both buildings is different, and, and it should be. We, at Robert E. Lee, you have, in the middle of the wings, in, in all three, all three wings, A, B, D, and E, I know you don't know exactly where that is, but there are like islands of collaboration that are between like six classrooms. So it actually called for a different type of furniture that was more flexible, movable, and all that, and, and according to our architects, and part of its aesthetics, but, but to make a flexible, it's more like a cube furniture in a way. So, and it just doesn't work, work good at John Tyler. And they're, they're the only ones that bid, the only ones that bid Robert E. Lee.
So the Lee project, going into this, I did not want any wasted space. And so at Lee, those hallways that weren't being used, except for just during passing periods, were wasted space. So instead of adding square footage to the project and adding these other collaborative spaces, we decided to use the middle of the hallway, within code, for our, our collaboration spaces. At JT, you were able to do that actually with the existing building and the redesign of it as we went through and knocked out some walls and redid some, the way we did some things. So it's a little bit different design there because we didn't want to waste space or add more square footage either. So kind of a cost reduction on the actual construction piece.
Okay, well, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Loper? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Exciting to see the bonds coming together. So we have items A, I, and J. I will consider a motion to approve both of those.
I move that we approve items I and J as written.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Nation, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, so we've approved items A, I, and J. Okay, we're moving on to the curriculum instruction consent agenda. We've had a couple board members indicate that they want to pull H and I specifically. Dr. Crawford, are there any others that we would also like to pull?
No, just a few comments before you actually vote on that, if you don't mind. B is our agreement with the University of Texas at Houston Children's Language Institute. We had two days' worth of rigorous phonics and spelling instruction with our elementary principals last week. Superintendent, the assistant superintendents, all but Tasha, because she just doesn't want to learn phonics, participated in that. And it was, I'm going to tell you, I've been to Marzano, I've heard Schlecty, I've heard some of these renowned instructional leaders provide us in my trainings over the years. It's quite possibly was the best instructional leadership professional development that I've experienced, paired along with the Voyager group that y'all approved last week. So we've got a good fledgling partnership with University of Texas and Houston that are passionate about phonics, that are passionate about literacy, and that are passionate about all things handwriting, penmanship, and spelling. So some of the things we've been talking out here that I didn't really know that we were going to get into at those, there is hope that maybe the old-school approach can get us back to reading the way that we need to read. And so in saying that, I just wanted to make sure I made a comment on that. We also have two items on here for TJC. Congratulations to Dr. Mahia as the new president of Tyler Junior College. Our partnership with them is exceptional and should be a model for the rest of the state in what we're doing with dual credit and early college high schools. So I just wanted to comment on that before y'all actually voted in consent.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I will take a motion for items A through G.
I move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have item H, memorandum of understanding with the Mentoring Alliance.
Yeah, Mentoring Alliance, that has three services that sprout off their umbrella, or underneath their umbrellas, Boys and Clubs, Boys and Girls Club of East Texas and their after-school program, Rose City Summer Camp, which we're in the middle of right now. I hope you can go visit a location here sometime this summer. And then Gospel Village, that provides mentorships for the youth of our community by upstanding individuals, adults in our community. This is our annual MOU, our memorandum of understanding with the Mentoring Alliance as we prepare for the upcoming school year, the 2019-2020 school year. Listed here, you have the Boys and Girls Club of East Texas and the locations that they'll actually have for our schools. Very excited about having them back as a partner and certainly look forward to the future and what we're able to provide those folks as well, or our students as well.
Yeah, I was the one who asked to have it pulled. My question, so I read this as what I'd call a status quo agreement. This doesn't address the plans for expansion that we've talked about that would, if they go forward, are part of the upcoming budget, so...
That's correct, because y'all have two things to talk about tonight, to discuss. One is salaries, which has been mandated by the state, along with the opportunity at introducing a district-wide full-day pre-K to the school system as well. That pair, the expenditures on that, as we work towards that, will give us the amounts that we'll have to do other creative things as well. So no, this is a status quo. This is a MOU of our continued partnership, and we'll work out any type of expansion of Rose City Summer Camps as we move along through the summer, as we go forward, as we talk about those other two things that the state prioritized for us.
So you'll come back later with specifics, like the financial...
We're still going to provide a Rose City Summer Camp opportunity, just as we did, we've done the last three or four years. We are still going to have partnerships and after-school programming offered at every one of our, is it every one of our elementary schools? I don't want to count right now. Is that right? Okay. At every one of our elementary schools, Boys and Girls Club will be, will have a program there. And then you actually have two at Bolter Middle School and one at Three Lakes Middle School. You know, them venturing into middle schools is a little, is a little different, and so we'll continue to try to add those on as we go forward. Them trying to staff them, it's probably their biggest challenge. We'd have it everywhere. So we're kind of growing in those middles. And then Gospel Village, an opportunity for us to have that MOU so that with parental consent, their mentors will have access to our students as needed, certainly in partnership with that parent or guardian.
So this is just saying that we agree to continue our partnership. You will come back again with more specificity is what I'm asking.
As always, yeah. Y'all got to approve amounts over $50,000.
All right.
That is board policy, so make sure the public understands that. It costs more than $50,000 for some of that, but this is our annual agreement that would go in front of y'all.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thanks for recommending to pull this, Fritz. We're lucky to have the Mentoring Alliance as a community partner, and I think it is a model that, you're talking about us with TJC, this is a model that can help districts across the states as well. I think we're fortunate to have them in our town because it does take a village, and they are invested. So that is item H. I'll take a motion to approve item H.
I move we approve administrative recommendation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item I.
Item I, we actually have a presentation for you tonight. I actually have these to hand, to provide under separate cover to the board. Nope, that one. Pass those down. We'll go over pre-K and seek board action. I'm not touching anything. There we go. As we've been discussing informally and formally since the beginning of the eighty-sixth legislature, pre-K is an operative, is now, is now being funded by the state of Texas if a school district so chooses to enact that. Providing dollars now to fund full-day pre-K for qualifying students, just they've been funding full-day kindergarten over the last twenty-plus years for all students. And while kindergarten is not compulsory, it is, it is felt as if it was compulsory in that all students shall go to kindergarten and that there's good things that will happen. There is a history with early education. It does start with Head Start. We've heard, we've had some speakers here tonight talk about that. It's provided early educational opportunities for children since the nineteen-sixties, starting as a federal initiative, and that was when pre-K and kindergarten did not exist, especially for children of poverty. There was no doubt that they needed an early opportunity to be able to catch up, and we've had success doing that. It's admirable what Head Start programs across the nation and even here locally have been able to accomplish in regard to that. But the state has done the right thing. The state has done the right thing in funding kindergarten now for the last twenty years if a district chose to accept it. And now they're actually bringing onboard the opportunity for school systems to consider operating a full-day pre-K. Right now, we have half-day pre-Ks for qualifying students combined with a Head Start as early educational opportunities for our students. Go back, please. It's all right. Remember, a long time ago, children started school in the first grade. That was the first grade. Kindergarten and pre-K has been added since then. Again, in modern compulsory education, kindergarten's expected, and now pre-K is now fully funded and is becoming a rising opportunity for children to, and parents to access as well. Next one. So we have actually piloted some pre-Ks in the school system now for the last few years. The district's piloted four full-day pre-K classes at Andy Woods Elementary School, two qualifying classes, along with two tuition-based for those that did not qualify. Our data has come back here locally within our kindergartners the following year that our success rates compared to our half, to our half-day pre-K students and our Head Start students are actually outperforming, or not out, excuse me. Our data says that our full-day pre-K kids, both qualifiers and tuition, are outperforming our half-day qualifiers and our Head Start students when they get to kindergarten. So that has given us some pretty real-time data as we've led up to this. If you'll recall, in 2013, before I arrived, the actual strategic planning committee actually talked about having universal pre-K for all kids in Tyler ISD. So we're just now getting around to it because we now actually have the funding for that, even though we've been piloting some things locally as much as we can handle. Next slide. This is something that is a little concerning to me as superintendent. Texas and Tyler ISD curriculum and standards, and I'm talking about academics here, that they do exceed Head Start's curriculum and standards. There is a barrier there. There is a barrier between Head Start and pre-K curriculum and standards of Texas. We are not allowed to proctor our curriculum to Head Start students. In saying that, we're saying that district-wide pre-K will provide that opportunity for the ownership and supervision of the academic development as aligned to the district and Texas standards, and then instructional leadership and outcome responsibilities will fall upon the campus principal. Right now, and I'd probably handle it the same way that I would if I was a principal on a campus that had two diametrically, I won't say opposed programs, but certainly different goals. They made sure, make sure that those kiddos are safe. They also make sure that those kiddos are fed well. They also make sure that those kiddos are included in the rotations and whatnot. But they do not have much academic supervision, if at all, of anything that's going on in their building as far as Head Start goes. We'd like for that to happen, and Reverend Mason and Mr. Sterling, maybe you did it in a different way, but right now, it is, it is academically speaking, off limits to my campus principals. Next one. We do realize that there are other services that are out there that Head Start provides, and we are planning for wraparound service accessibility for students and their parents, and that will continue. We've spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks, ever since House Bill III was adopted, it was just signed the other day, but once it was adopted and the Big Three had their press conference, we went to work. And we are certainly talking to folks and wanting to have the same type of relationships that this school district has already have, had, certainly done something where we are actually at the table in regard to that and not just the program of Head Start. We'll be the conduit for healthcare, medical, and other services provided for qualifying students and parents. We're going to structure ourselves to do that. For one, our elementary counselors provide this currently to our students. I want to let that sink in a little bit. Our counselors, whether they be serving a kindergarten student or a current pre-K student, all the way up to twelfth grade, those wraparound services, those health services, those things like that, we pick up a phone also and are able to call and get those, get them in touch with the right folks. That's not going to go away with the implementation of pre-K. We've already had some conversations early here as far as in the planning process of speaking with folks like Pat in regard to doing that. We've also had some conversations with some doctors. We know what our contracts look like. We know what our expenditures have looked like throughout the years. We also know that our, that these students that are going to be in pre-K, well, and they qualify now, that might be Head Start eligible, but they're also pre-K eligible, also similarly qualify for some of those things through SHARs and MAC and reimbursements through those doctors' offices. That does not go away. Our students don't, don't just go away. Next thing, please. We have the potential to serve more children through pre-K than what we actually serve now, and that there is no cap on our pre-K, and our students will be served as long as there is space. That is certainly the beauty of how the Texas formula is going to work out, is that the students that do show up for you to serve, they will be funded. They're funded through your K-three, is that correct, correct, Tasha, through your K-three numbers? And that's how, that's how you're funded. They're actually funded for the kids that are enrolled at that time. It's actually what your K-three numbers look like. We also think getting them in our pre-K systems earlier provides us a Head Start on attacking that summer slot. There is research out there that says a quality, high-quality pre-K program like the governor's describing, that we're showing it out at Andy Woods, does provide an opportunity for students to miss the summer slot, or at least address the summer slot all the way up to third grade. We do think it does have a place here in Tyler ISD. I think that was my last slide.
Not your last slide? Okay, I think we're all waiting on this.
Oh, excuse me.
Here we go.
So let's talk about staffing. If we were to go to some type of model, whether it be all-in, or if y'all wanted us to try something else, Head Start staff are under contract or reasonable assurance with this school district. I want to make sure that that's said publicly as well. So if you've signed a contract, we have contract laws that we have to abide by in the state of Texas as it relates to employment in Tyler ISD. Reasonable assurances are a little different, but if we've given you a reasonable assurance, we'll do everything in our power to place you in a liked position as you're qualified for. Those contract obligations, we have a contract, that means an agreement between two parties. Head Start teachers, whether it be all of them or whether it be some of them, will actually become pre-K teachers in our school system. Head Start staff, under reasonable assurances, this is the staff now, pairs, et cetera, will be placed as and if appropriate. And when we have openings, inappropriate openings, those folks can slide in there as well. What does that mean for Head Start teachers? Yes, we would like to include them as part of our, as part of our professional development, as part of our aligning our curriculum and our standards to what we know is going to work, and we have early data that's going to do that. Now, again, not saying that what Head Start provides is inappropriate because it's not, it's good stuff. But at the same time, is it focusing on what we're charged to do, and that is teaching and learning? That is, that is the decision that we're going to have to make, or that we're recommending that y'all are going to have to make in determining our future in regard to what we have for these programs. And now you can ask a question.
Okay. Dr. Crawford, let me first of all say that I have been a strong proponent and supporter of Head Start, probably since my days of working in the district as Title I coordinator. I know the merits of the program, and I've seen the progress the students have made. So I need to ask you, what will the difference, what would the curriculum look like and how is it, I guess I'm trying to say, well, let me say this, too. When I was a principal, I supervised my whole school, so I don't know where that disconnect started. I do know that when Head Start would come in to do their monitoring, now that, that honestly may have been a little challenging at times because I believe our Head Start teachers should be able to take the children as far as they could go. But I do know that Head Start did have some limitations, so I understand that. So is our curriculum going to be over and above that? Is it going to exceed what Head Start curriculum is expecting at present time?
In terms of teaching and learning, academic standards of the state of Texas and your expectations in Tyler ISD, it is a different curriculum. It is a different standard, a different set of expectations in regard to early education. And I agree with you. I do think well of Head Start as an option for early ed. But as far as aligning what we're doing for our youngest, starting at grades four, or excuse me, four-year-old, yeah, I think that that's going to be an opportunity for us to consider us to have alignment and get them earlier. I don't want to say that our principals are hands-off. I did provide, they do provide basic services and supervision of those students, our campuses do. But as far as the academic leadership, the instructional leadership that occurs, that is a Head Start function. Ms. Miles is the one that is to supervise those, and I can understand how our principals may think that they have a different set of requirements... may think that they have a different set of requirements over here and yet versus a different set of requirements over here, and they may not feel as comfortable doing that with a different program as opposed to the ones that the district has been working on and working hard at.
Okay. So I'm understanding you to say that the curriculum will exceed that of Head Start academically?
The standards and the curriculum will align with the state of Texas, which Tyler ISD is aligned at.
All right. Secondly, I am also familiar with the social services and the health services that are afforded. Did I understand you to say that these same services will continue to be afforded if we go to pre-K, to our pre-K students?
Yeah, let's understand that just because a kid's in Head Start means that that's not the automatic qualifier for them for health services. It's their income level.
Income, that's correct.
And so whether or not they're in Head Start or not, those students are able to, if they're afforded the right opportunity, if we have the right pairing of a healthcare provider, or dental, or glasses, then they should qualify just the same as they are with Head Start.
Case managers, the case managers, if I'm correct, in the past have been the ones who have gone out and have done a lot of the recruiting, as well as perhaps the Head Start teachers and parents. Will we have case managers who will continue to do some of the jobs that they are performing right now, as well as whatever else the school district requires of them to do?
That is to be determined. We do have plans to have some type of engagement, parental engagement functions. Whether or not we carry over as many case managers as they have in Head Start right now, that's to be determined. But we do have plans to be able to make sure that our staff is engaging parents and seeking That's what I'll commit to.
Okay. So will there be some case managers?
There will be some. I don't know if we're going to call them case managers, but we will certainly have structures in place that will provide parental engagement opportunities, and those folks will be more than just that. They will also help us with recruiting and making sure that we reach the right folks. We can also combine it with our constituent services and other systems that we have in place so that we don't have some redundancy in bringing this program onboard. And I think that's the danger of this thing, is if we have some functions inside the school system that are already in place and redundancies are not going to be needed on this, it can't happen. We can't, we cannot act as a, as a, as a place just to hold jobs. It's going to have to be something that's meaningful, and if there's something already in place with the school system, we will have to evaluate that and see where folks fit as they come over, and if we have some things that are already being done with the school system, then we'll continue to do those things with the school system.
So Ms. Folsom spoke this evening. We will still seek the assistance of these agencies who could help our families.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's great for us that there's an expectation there, but again, as far as, from my point of view, it is from the teaching and learning aspect of this. I understand that those other things are certainly, the wraparound services are needed to support students that come from an impoverished background. We get that. But the curriculum and the standards are something that we're going to miss out on if we don't take advantage of this opportunity, and so we're hoping that we can find a nice, happy medium that allows us to insert our standards and our curriculum.
I'm excited to hear about the curriculum. I guess my biggest concern has to do with, I've dealt with these families and with the children. When we said qualifying, I didn't hear what you, what you mean by qualifying, that the students were qualified. Are we still seeing only before September 1st, they are four years of age, or what do we mean by qualifiers?
There are age and birth dates, the benchmarks. I'm not familiar with that, I'll go ahead and admit that. This big noggin holds a lot of information, but not every piece of information.
Who?
This big noggin right here.
Oh. I've been looking for something back.
No, right here.
Mr. Big Noggin, could you please?
Yeah, so my head.
So if I'm in Head Start now, let's say I have a child who has qualified according to Head Start requirements, will I be served in the pre-K program?
Absolutely. We'd like you to be a part of our pre-K program if there's not a Head Start option there. And then we were also hoping that those that are not qualifying for Head Start, at an income level that is, that is still struggling, but per the Head Start standards, they don't qualify for Head Start, we're hoping to serve those kids as well.
So there won't be a cap on income? We're going to serve the students?
You want to be in pre-
If they meet the age?
That's right. As long as there's, as long as there's space in classrooms, and that is no different than what we have in Head Start either. There is a cap, the amount of students that we do serve in Head Start.
And not, not to jump in here, but you mentioned classrooms. This will be district-wide, so all of our elementary schools, except for Caldwell Arts Academy, which is the magnet.
That's correct.
Will have full-day pre-K if we choose to.
Opportunities in a varying way. Some campuses may only have one classroom full of that. You talk about Owens and Jack, but certainly they also have opportunities at tuition-based pre-K. So actually, we're looking at two classrooms per campus to be able to serve our folks. So if you think about two classrooms per campus, twenty kids apiece, you can do the math, and we're going to have a pretty robust opportunity there. And if we have space, we'll actually add those as we go along. But as far as this first year goes, our anticipations are that we will actually be able to serve what we have, even the walk-ups that are coming up.
So we're not excluding anyone?
Absolutely not.
Who have age of four and above, age of four?
We are not excluding anyone, no.
So in the past, where Head Start may have served some three-year-olds, we would not be serving three-year-olds?
Well, we do serve three-year-olds in PPCD. Dr. Hanson, would you like to speak to that?
So we serve three-year-olds in PPCD, so they're students who qualify under special education, and, and so we, and that will continue. That doesn't change. That's a special education function.
Okay. Where these students have previously been served in Head Start, you will have an increase in numbers then? Are we ready to increase those numbers, and are we able to serve those students?
An increase in numbers-
If your numbers increase?
An increase in numbers in pre-K or in special education?
No.
I'm trying to understand the question.
Where Head Start has previously served three-year-olds, will those three-year-olds be served in any program here in our school district?
Head Start served the three-year-olds through, if they qualified for special education.
Yes.
Right, and so we will accommodate the students who's, who, yeah, who are in special education, who qualify.
Yeah, but by federal law and state law, three-year-olds have to be served if they are identified in, as PPCD. They may have some type of biological challenge, or they may have some type of, I guess speech also qualifies as well, is that correct? Speech as early as three? I can't get anybody else to look at me and answer me. Thank you, Mina.
Yes, if they qualify under special education.
What are y'all doing over there?
We were talking about the same question.
Okay.
And we, yes, if they qualify under special education, three-years-old, then we are required to serve them, and we will. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We were clarifying the same question.
So Reverend Mason, are you asking, do we already do 3K that are not, that are not PPCD? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking, I need to know that the three-year-olds who may have qualified to be served this year through Head Start would be served in some program in our school district.
Yes, ma'am. They are served through Head Start because Tyler ISD has, is required to do that, whether we're Head Start or not.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then I guess the other thing, you spoke of placement. So teachers will remain teachers in pre-K programs, they will be assigned to other schools?
Per their certification. Statute allows the organization, the placement of staff per qualifications, and so we would like to mirror and marry a early ed teacher with a pre-K position, and right now, that is likely to happen. That does not disqualify them for future years of becoming a kindergarten teacher.
Right. But I thought all Head Start teachers were certified teachers.
They are.
It used to be when I was principal.
They are.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, is it, is it an automatic move from a Head Start classroom to a pre-K classroom? We're going to try to make that happen, but is there-
Or it could be Head Start at kindergarten, you're saying?
It could be.
Oh, I see.
Early ed is early ed.
All right.
So per certifications, and so when we're trying to plug vacancies and things like that that happen, right now, does it not look like, Mr. Jones, that those Head Start teachers could effectively move over into pre-K?
That is exactly right. As soon as the decision is made here tonight, we will get busy in our human resources to take care of our business with our staff and our personnel.
I have one last question, and I'm finished, I can turn the mic over to someone else. You apply for Title I funds, it's not automatic, you have to be approved. So have we been approved for this year, or we haven't applied, or where are we?
We've actually put the application in.
All right.
But we have not taken any money. Is that correct? Okay.
For Head Start?
For Head Start, yes. Title I funds is a different subset of that, or not a subset of that, that's a different subset of Title I.
Do we know approximately how many more students will be being served through pre-K as opposed to Head Start?
The potential could be up to 200 more students once we enact the program. So I think we've got 430 assigned for Head Start, is that correct?
Four thirty-two.
Four thirty-two? And so you could look upwards of 200 or so to actually be a part of that as well.
Two hundred more.
Two hundred more, yeah. But with design for next year to actually, the capacity that we could potentially look at is upwards of a thousand. And so if you think about the grade levels that we have, you look at our kindergarten numbers, I think we've got over 1,200 students in our kindergarten district-wide. And so if you match that, if every, if every parent took advantage of pre-K in Tyler ISD, we know that's not going to happen, but if they did, it would be around that same kindergarten number of 1,200 students. Be a good problem to have.
Yeah.
And those students, I want to make sure I understood, those students who have already qualified for Head Start, do they automatically go into pre-K? Is that correct?
We can make that happen, yes, sir.
So I want to just clarify eligibility. So we've used language like qualifiers, which usually only means people who, because of risk factors, qualify. And then so currently, before we did this, if you were a non-qualifier for either Head Start or TISD pre-K.
Sure.
The only way you could have TISD pre-K was through the tuition-
Correct.
-option that we piloted at a handful of schools.
Right, but there's a gap in there as well. There's a gap in there as far as qualifying for Head Start, and then what the qualifying, the number could be for free and reduced lunch, as far as that goes. Seventy percent of, seventy-five percent of our school system is free and reduced lunch. And so there is a gap in there of kiddos that are not being served that could qualify for that.
Meaning the criteria to be served by Head Start are, require greater risk or greater poverty-
Sure.
-than the TISD pre-K. So even just with TISD pre-K qualifiers, we're going to pick up more at-risk students.
That's correct.
You use some language like, if we have space, you would accommodate more students. Are those students who would then pay tuition, or are those-
Possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, just in the pockets of our school system that can afford to pay tuition.
Okay, so maybe some sort of sliding scale?
Right, or if somebody lives outside of a, if someone lives outside of a, of a zone that's not, that's offering tuition pre-K, let's just say you live in Jones and Rice is the nearest tuition pre-K, and they have a slot open for tuition, you don't qualify for qualified pre-K, but you can go over there to Rice. That'd be the nearest one, I think, as far as Jones' zone goes, that's where they would actually attend.
Under the current system, or next year, or both?
Right now, a tuition-based student can go to any, any school that they, any tuition-based program.
So in terms of how next year would look different, currently, we have pre-K on just a handful of schools. Some of those are for qualifiers only.
Correct.
A couple have been piloted as, as tuition-based-
Full day.
Full day.
Along with qualifier, full day.
Okay, so we've qual, we've piloted some full day. Now we're talking about taking the results of that pilot district-wide to where every elementary campus, except for Caldwell, would have-
Has the opportunity to have a full-day pre-K class or two in their school.
Okay, so net, we're looking at a very dramatic expansion to, of access to services for these at-risk kids, regardless of their ability to pay.
Sure.
And you add that in, you have an even greater increase in access to these services.
That's correct.
And the data from the pilot shows the outcomes are greater for these full-day pre-K, TISD kids than any of the other pre-K options that they've currently been serving.
That's correct. So there's two factors on that. There's the full-day-ness of it, but I'm going to make sure that the public understands this. Tier-one instruction is really good also, and so we're going to have to have some buy-in on this. We're going to have to have some, some improved instruction to make this happen, and, but we're not going to get that if we don't go do it. Our half-day, y'all are familiar with half-day, it is a dip in your toe in the water type of experience. It's tough to get, you know, the length that you need over a full course of a year of instruction for that. So that is going to be another positive gain, I think, being able to provide that. Now, let's also look at this from this point of view. It is a choice by the parent. This is not compulsory. I know a couple of legislative sessions ago, there were some folks that were biblically opposed to pre-K. This is a choice, this is an opportunity. You're looking at a guy who put his kids, all three of them, in pre-K because they had two working parents that could not afford to stay at home. So in saying that, we feel like, in our situation, that meant the world difference in becoming the type of young men and women that they are, along with their academic success. But that was our choice. This is, everything's a choice in early ed, and we're hoping that this will be an opportunity for a choice program to be made. Then, again, I'll rehash this again, that the community asked for back in 2013 on the strategic plan.
So speaking of academic success, is there going to be options for dual-language campuses to do dual-language pre-K?
So Birdwell has two dual-language pre-Ks that are scheduled for next year.
Will there be tuition options too for them?
That's in development. If we get enough folks to do that, absolutely, we'll do that.
Well, so what I'm hearing is, just to recap everything, in your opinion, one, I'm excited about all-day pre-K for the district. That's what, what I'm really excited about, having seen over the last couple of years how the kids do when they get to kindergarten and first grade, and I think with our goals for reading by the third grade, it's a, it would be huge for us and a big step in helping us get there. And then after hearing some folks speak tonight, you know, a couple of concerns, one was about three-year-olds, and I think that's been answered. They would, you know, not be left out there. We'd make space for them, and we would have-
The ones that are to be served through PPCD, et cetera?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, the ones that were being served that we were talking about. The curriculum would align better with ours. More students will be served.
That is potentially more students will be served.
Hopefully.
Got to choose it.
They got to choose it. And hopefully, we can, we will provide wraparound services for these kids so we can equal the wraparound services. I'm hearing a lot of positives, in my opinion. I know that since you've been superintendent of the school district, we've had to make a lot of decisions that weren't always historically popular, but you have a track record, and your staff and administration has a track record of success driving from those decisions that we've had to make. And, you know, I'm hoping that if this gets approved, that this is also one of those, one of those successes, and I think it will be. So, does anybody else have any comments?
I just want to say that I hope that if this is approved, that we guarantee the wraparound, wrap, wraparound, wrap-
Wraparound.
Wraparound services, as well as the strong parental involvement component, because I think- Because I think that is very important, um, to be effective and, and make, um, academic changes within this age group. Uh, the parental training, the parental involvement, um, the social, uh, emotional care of the students as well. So we really need to, um, keep that piece in there and, um, caseworkers as many as.
Are you asking or you're telling?
I'm telling, that's what I would expect if we pass it.
Right.
Well, I would, I would say, Mr. Washman, you enumerated the parallels, um, of things that will continue if this is approved. You also stated that, uh, you're hearing positives. I'm, I'm not hearing any negatives. And, um, if we follow through and, um, all of those services, wraparound services, are diligently, diligently searched out, I'm, I'm not seeing any, any logical reason for us not to approve this.
I want to pause the board real quick on this. Because I need to know what your expectations are on the wraparound services and the caseworkers. Because we cannot replicate what is the amount. What I, what I want to make sure that I reinforce is, we have some things that we're doing internally. We do have, you know, Head Start has one nurse, but we have nurses on our campuses that can also do some of these things through our health services. We also have counselors that, that should be able to do these types of things. On various campuses, we have people like social workers. We have, gosh, master teachers, assistant principals and principals. So I want to make sure, before we move forward on this, what that means. Because I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm looking at this from a curriculum and instruction point of view, number one, and number one only. And I know there's some other exp, expectations out there on the social-emotional side and on the social side. So that's what I, before you take a vote on this, and if you need a table, then go ahead and do that. That's going to put a strain on us preparing for next year. But I'm going to, I, I need to ask the board to pause to consider that, on what your expectations are for us in regard to that. If it means replicating what we're already doing, that's going to be a tou, and I'm just being very transparent in this meeting tonight.
You mean replicating what Head Start is presently doing? Is that what you're saying?
We're going to replicate the service. I'm talking about replicating the exact thing that they're already doing. I need permission to go fix the CNI portion of this for early Ed. That's really what I'm asking for tonight.
I can only speak for me, Dr. Crawford, and, uh, you know, I'm a strong academician. My concern, of course, is, and I love hearing about the curriculum, because I've always believed, and research tells us, how strong children can adapt and learn between the ages of one and five. So I know that's a fact. And the more we teach our children at those ages, I believe they'll be able to, uh, master those skills. My only concern is that, I know that the children we have served, the four-year-olds, and I know the, the services that they have received in the past. I'm not saying you have to, uh, well, we talked about personnel this morning. We looked at the list of personnel. What I'm saying is, if you could do all that you can to assist these families, because a lot of these families have great needs. And I'm not saying every campus would have a caseworker, but I, I would like to see at least four or five or whatever caseworkers who could rotate between the campuses and maybe, and I didn't know the counselors did these kinds of things, because they didn't do that when I was the principal. No, no, I don't think you all understand it, but I want you all to understand, I'm going to say this. I think what we're planning, what the district is recommending to us for pre-K is a great program. The curriculum is great, the fact that we're going to serve more students is great. The fact that the district is willing to step up and do this and go beyond what the Head Start requirements are is great. I just want to make sure we're doing all that we can to help families, because these are some of the children of greatest need, uh, when Head Start has gone out to seek them. And I'm not telling you to do everything that Head Start has done, because I know we're going to go above in a lot of areas.
Yeah, and it concerns me that I got a little bit of traffic out here in the audience of our own employees saying what our people do and don't do. I'm not talking with anybody out there, I'm talking with Reverend Mason. So right now, my issue is, is that we've got a lot of good people that are already doing a lot of, of similar things in our school system. And, and certainly we'll add some folks, we've talked about that. But at the same time, it, it is not something that is, it's not anybody's job, so they don't do that. Because we, we could all look at ourselves, so, they don't do that, they say they do, they don't do it. I, I'm going to tell you what, right now, our phonemic awareness and our phonological awareness is not good, and it goes across the board. And if it was already being done well, our reading results would be different. And to say that we're putting four hundred and thirty-two students out of a potential one thousand next year, not being exposed to our curriculum, that's an issue. And if someone's got an idea on how to fix that, invent something, make a lot of money.
Well, what I would hope is that the present employees of Head Start will see the great value in the plan for this program, and that they will have jobs, they will be placed. May not be exactly what they're doing now, but they're, they're.
And there's a lot of that concern right now, I understand that.
Right.
That is probably.
Because we're living in some tough times.
That are, that are, that are, that are clouding some things for us, because we are part of a school system, we're under contract with Tyler ISD. And we're trying to, uh, that, that, we're, we're not trying to get deep into thinking about that. So, I, I get it, and I'm not being critical of anyone. Uh, I do not have any type of malice towards that issue, I, I understand that. Mr. Sanchez wants to say something.
Reverend Mason, in reference to the students and being served, there are, there are plenty of kids who are in, in Head Start now that have, have older brothers and sisters already in our schools. So there is already some services being provided to the, to the family through either our counselors, our nurses, through constituent services. And so we want to make sure that everybody understands that when we talk about educating the whole child, we, we've been doing it on our campuses already. And so it, Head Start has been an extension, the three and the four-year-olds that qualify, we're already serving them probably at the elementary level or the middle school level. And so those services will continue to happen, because we have a, a desire to make sure that all parents are involved in, in their own child's education. So if that means at times where our nurses have to do the eye vision, we have the database that says that they have a brother and sister at another school. So they reach out to them to make sure that they have glasses or they have the dental assistance that they need. And that's already happening through health services and the counseling department. So it's, it's more of a, more of a wraparound where we now can truly wraparound from the Head Start to the middle school, to the high school for the family. It's a one-stop shop, if you will.
Okay, so make sure you, you understand what I.
Absolutely, but I, I, again, I just, I'm, I'm listening to y'all, and I want to make sure that we're pausing before we take any action on and make sure that the, the district's administration, what the expectations are on that. Because saying that you're just going to replicate that and not use some of the efficiencies that you already have in your school system is going to be, i- it's tough for me to have a recommendation to say we need to go forward with this. Because, again, that, that's going to break us, and y'all aren't going to like that budget. Um, we've got plenty of holes right now, we can plug people in, as long as they qualify for it. But it's saying, Raleigh's right. When they leave pre-K, or Head Start, it does, it's not over. They've got thirteen more years of it. And we need to do better, I guess, than what we're doing, because nobody knows we're doing it.
I don't think we're opposing, I don't think we're on opposite ends. I just think what we're seeing, and what Mr. Sterling said, is that we'd love to see the parental involvement component remain strong.
Okay.
Because it's very important. And we'd like to see the social and health needs of students addressed. By whatever means the district designed, as long as we're not leaving any child behind. Because if you're hungry, you can't learn. If you don't have clothes anywhere to lay your head, it's very difficult to focus. We're just saying, we want to make sure we address those needs. And I, I don't think, Mr. Sterling said it, nor I, anybody else on this board said replicate.
Absolutely.
We just want to see the needs of students met.
I didn't, I didn't hear you say it.
All right.
But I wanted to make sure to get the pause there, so we could talk about it a little bit more, because I just, I don't know if, if I heard some things differently, or if y'all heard some things differently. But I got some lasers shot over here by that one, that little blonde on the end right there, um, about, about some things. We've got an idea on how to take care of this, because we already have some of these services in-house. We don't have to operate a dual-replicated system.
Well, and, and just so the community knows, and I think they do, but while we sit up here and discuss these things, this is the only time we have to do it. You know, so we're asking questions that might be, you know, concerning either to the superintendent or to the community. And as we sit here and listen, you know, we understand some traditional hesitancies, but we also hear a lot of positives. I mean, I hear a lot of positives out of this. We have, uh, seventy-five percent of our district, you know, is, uh, uh, lower socio-economic or at-risk, at-risk. And we care about every single one of those students. And my expectation would be that we take care of those students. And I know that's your expectation too. Well, we're not up here because we don't like kids. We want, we're up here because we want to see, uh, Tyler ISD be the best. And I think one component of that is all-day pre-K. And I think, uh, it's, there's just traditional hesitancies that we're, and I'm, I'm fully confident we can step up to the plate and serve those kids to the best of our ability. And that's what it is all about, is serving those kids. And I think we can do that personally.
One last comment, and I got to think about my principals here. And so this is something they've, they've asked for, uh, in one way, shape, or form. May not be a hundred percent of them asking for it. But in saying that they want the opportunity to, for their teaching staff or their instructional leadership to influence these kids a year earlier. That's our, that's our ask. Love the other things that can happen, and we, we will work our tails off to design something for that to happen, um, for that to happen.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Okay, no comments. I'll entertain a motion to approve item I, district-wide full-day pre-kindergarten.
I move we approve item I.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes seven-oh. The ayes have it. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Uh, I think next is our superintendent's staff reports.
Yeah, coming up around, I'm like, I've got another handout for you. This is a, um, separate, under separate cover. I think there's enough for y'all, excuse me. These are raise options. We've discussed this with, um, uh, at a previous workshop, the opportunity of what we were going to put together and what those raises could look like. Tonight, we're not voting on anything. This is an actual opportunity for y'all to discuss this publicly. There are four options for you in regard to considerations for this upcoming year. On the first page of raise options, you have option one, two, three, and four. And we actually have a slide for all of the different, um, options that are available for us. So Ms., Ms. Bjork's going to put the microphone in front of her so that we can kind of talk through this as a, as a board and administration.
Do you want me to discuss them?
Yes, just go ahead and go on.
Okay, the first option was. Was the teachers at three thousand?
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Yes. There it is, right there. Teachers one to five, three thousand dollars. If you have more than five years, three thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, the clerical manual trades that are a hundred percent employee, five percent. If they're less than a hundred percent, a three percent. And then all others, three percent of the midpoint. So that's option one, and I believe the, okay, option two is the same for teachers, but a six percent for the, the full-time FTEs for clerical and manual trades, and the others remain the same. Option three, teachers remain the same, um, a six percent for the hundred percent clerical manual trades, and four percent for all others. The last one is a different one for teachers. Teachers one to five, twenty-five hundred. And we picked six to twenty, because there were some areas, like between fifteen and twenty, where we were falling below the minimum state pay scale, since they changed it for this. And so we recommend four thousand. And then our teachers over twenty years are almost up over our maximum pay, so that is three thousand. And then the other, we kept the same at the bottom. And so the cost was on that first slide for each option. So there's not a big difference between options one and four. It's just different way to look at it.
So there's, there's about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar window between, uh, option one and option four?
We were trying to hit that middle-range teacher from fifteen to twenty.
You know, as our discussions have gone, gone on, since they actually designed this, and I hope the public understands what the floor, um, could have possibly been for, for, for our proposal. And certainly the board is allowed to go back on that, and if you want to consider the floor and just go with that, and then have other dollars left over, you can. So as far as the design of this, um, it's come out that the legislature has, was really focused on, um, the, the ten-to-fifteen-year teacher. That that's when they, their research came back and said that that's when you were starting to see either someone's going to stay with you, or they're going to, 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 to find another profession to work in. And so as that came out, that's when we came up with option four, along with the data that said that we were going to wind up falling a little bit behind if we did just across-the-board raises, to bolster that six-to-twenty-year teacher, as far as what their compensation would, could potentially be. I did hear someone speak in, in pub participation. I've also seen Austin ISD do a seven percent injection into their, their, their raises as well. I also heard that, that stipends may not need to be considered as well. But I do have a, a concern board, and that is that the statute does not fund this, pass this by any of them. There's not a design that this is going to be a permanency, uh, from here on out. What is the risk on that? Yeah, politically, you can say that that's going to be a fight, but you can also suffer through two thousand, uh, what we did in two thousand and eleven, and have to go back and, and reduce a lot of things in regard to that. So I do want to make sure you put that in the back of your mind. That's not our recommendation right now, we may come back and ask you to put that into our salary schedule. But I do think that it does behoove us to, 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 to think about whether or not this needs to be a stipend, or if this needs to actually be put into the, to the teacher pay, um, right away. Um, it does, stipend for, for your work does count towards TRS. That's a no, another misnomer out there that says that it won't be counted toward TRS. That is not correct, it will be counted towards TRS. Correct, CFO?
Right, and the thing about these options is you can break it down between a raise and a stipend too. It's still the same amount of money. Like you could say, for instance, um, fifteen hundred of it's a raise and the other fifteen hundred is a stipend, or however. I was just presenting the amounts. So we can break it down any way that we need to.
And, and our next board meeting, we will actually have some side-by-sides also of our healthcare. Remember that TRS is, is certainly funded at a different rate than if you're self-funded. And that there are benefits, that if you have your spouse and you, or just your spouse and your kids and you on participating in our healthcare, there is a financial incentive to do that if you work in Tyler ISD versus other school systems that are actually participating in the teacher-retirement system, active care, which is their, their healthcare. that are actually participating in the teacher retirement system, active care, which is their, their healthcare.
We're just discussing this tonight.
That's correct.
And you'd like to hear our thoughts?
We're just discussing.
Let me ask you a question, Tasha. Would we be able to afford, uh, for teachers one through five, a $3,000 raise? Teachers six through 20 years, a $4,000 raise? And teachers greater than 20 years, a $4,000 raise?
No.
We couldn't afford it?
The, the zero to five, or the one to five, we have more teachers in that area. We have 675 teachers in the one-to-five year.
We're also ahead
Right.
of those that we compete with for teachers at that range. So there's a little bit of
We are.
play in there to where we don't have to go quite as aggressive there. It's where you get to those middle years. We've had discussions, um, about getting to 50 quicker than anybody else. Uh, this kind of gets us in that, under that philosophy. But no, ma'am, three, four, and four is going to be very hard to make that budget.
So from the, if I remember from the last workshop, the minimum at that 30% of incremental funding going to compensation resulted in, was it $1,600 raise?
Yes, it was, um, two and a half million dollars total. And 1.9 of it was for teachers, and we're up to 3,700,000.
Right, so what, all of these options go way above what the state requires us to.
Say our, our gain is around eight million dollars, we're using more than 50% of it versus just the 30.
From a, uh, competitive standpoint, in terms of our ability to retain and attract teachers into ISD across the various experience ranges, wh- where do we need to make the biggest gains? Um, is it in those middle years that you were talking about, like the state has said? Or do we have a different experience here in Tyler?
It was year, I think, 15 and 16 where we saw some of the area districts were going to surpass us. And then the state minimum raised up, and we weren't hitting that minimum. So we had to, we had to at least go up 3,000, but the 4,000 would put us up higher than all the locals.
So is any plan more costly than the other, uh, for instance, option four?
That's the best. That's what, you know, the, the most rates for the teachers. The 6% for the hourly and the 4% for all others. But you can take pieces of each one. You can do 6% for hourly, 3% for all others, 5%, 3%. You can choose whichever one, and I would just add it up differently.
What I like about option four, you're not excluding the teachers who have remained faithful to the school district. You're including everyone.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of needs, the difference between 3% for administrative professionals and 4%, is there, is there a competitive deficiency there that we're trying to overcome, or what's the?
That, I know that just around the area, I think most will be going probably 5%. 3 to 5%. So I just laid out all options. I don't know that competitively, we need to do anything in that area.
But remember, that's outside of the mandated statutorily required. Do you think you want to there? So, um, on that one, there's only three levels of, or there's two levels. Well, there's, yeah, there's two levels. There's, of the 70, of the 30, 75% of that has to go to teachers. 25% may be considered for others not administrative. Of that 75%, gosh, I'm getting confused.
But we're way above the state requirement.
Right.
Okay, we take 30%.
Right.
75% goes to teachers, 25% goes to the clerical manual trades 100%.
But as far as the zero to five and then five and up, there's, there's a requirement there.
Differentiation.
Yeah.
So you have to pay a little more, or, and they recommended 15%. But a lot of districts are just doing a small difference, like 200 or something like that.
Between your zero to five and your six and above. There has to be a differentiation there.
And we're, we're doing a large differentiation between 3,000 to 4,000 on option four.
So we've got options to look at and consider?
Yes.
If we have any other questions, we can.
And we can do other ones if you want to do different runs, but you can pretty much figure it out from this, but.
Can make a pay raise pizza out of the whole thing. Pick and choose.
Right.
Gumbo.
Gumbo. Okay, well, thank you.
If you have any questions, we're more than happy to call myself or, or Ms. Bjork or Mr. Jones in regard to all of this, if you've got questions after tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you. Is that it for, for item A on the, the House Bill 300?
Yes, I don't, I don't have, I mean, we, we talked extensively about pre-K before that.
Right.
Along with this.
Okay.
Once we get those two pieces of the budget figured out, then we can talk about some other things as we go forward.
Sure. Okay, well, moving on to future business. Looks like we have, uh, both years' graduation on the 15th and another regular meeting on the 22nd.
We do. I encourage the, the community, along with everybody that works for Tyler ISD, to attend the Wayne D. Bill Shear Center for Exceptional Programs graduation. It's a very special opportunity to celebrate, um, students that are successful and that have completed the, uh, their education here in Tyler ISD. Hope you're there. And then we have a regular meeting on July 22nd. Right now, we don't have a board workshop in July. Um, stay on your toes in case we need to call a, a workshop. We'll try to work around your vacations, but may not be able to go to every meeting we have. We'll try our best. I've got to be there, but y'all don't.
Sounds good. Moving on to
Three of you don't have.
adjournment?
Move we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.